We're calling during the meeting four six nine seven three six eight. Roll call Jacob.
Councilor Eastman?
Here.
Councilor Morrison?
Here.
Mayor Stewart?
Here.
Councilor Arndt is absent. Councilor Downs?
Here.
Councilor Rankin?
Here.
Town council recognitions, we have one. Town clerk certification for Jacob Cran.
Yes, included in your packet is a letter from the Maine Town and City Clerks Association notifying us that Jacob has attained certification as a certified clerk of Maine. He's been working on this for three years since he came to us. It's a significant investment of time made more difficult by the fact that COVID interrupted that and made the classes and those kind of things more difficult to attend. But Jacob came to work for us in 2019. He also, in addition to this, has been elected to the board of the Maine Town and City Clerks Association and most recently was appointed as their treasurer, which is significant. He's been sought out for news articles and interviews and represents this community very well. He stepped into a very difficult situation because he was following a very well-loved clerk who had been here for a very long time, and that's a hard job. It's much easier to follow someone who's done a terrible job and nobody liked them than it is to step into a community where you're going to be the new person for a very long time as a result. But we're very fortunate that we have Jacob. He's doing a great job. The 2020 election was like the firestorm of the world and he handled that with great professionalism and we had no issues. So I just thought it was important to recognize that and thank him for his efforts on our behalf and encourage him to continue his professional growth with us.
Congratulations. Next is consider minutes of previous meetings. We have town council minutes from eight twenty-five, 2022. How the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? Correspondence, we've got a couple of police calls. Verona Police call on August 26th, Verona Police call on August 23rd, and Orland Police call on August 18th. And also, I believe this is our first Silver Lake boat inspection?
This is our first year having participated. We had the Toddy Pond Lake Association Act as our agent in this. They employed the person, they did all this. It was a very good report. I think it was a successful year for them in the work that they did. There is a Know Your Neighbor program next Tuesday that's being done that's about Silver Lake water quality and that kind of thing. And this is a good indicator of the fact that the town continues to, even though we have no ownership interest in the water rights or any of that, that the water quality is significant important to us.
Any questions? Next is ordinances to consider introduce. We don't have any. Next item is discussion items. Looks like we have a request to advertise for sales and for closures. First is map zero zero seven zero six six, Daniel Burnier, 346 Duck Cove Road.
That one was paid in full today. That is off the list.
Okay. Next is map zero nine zero three A dash three, Carolyn Craig airs building only 160 Crossroad. Can we take these all as a group if we want to approve them? Is everybody okay with taking them as a group? Was there any problem with that from anybody? Next is map zero zero nine zero forty-three, Ray Jean Craig airs Crossroad. Number four is map zero forty-one zero twenty-four, Stephen Dusset, 683 River Road. Map zero zero nine zero three three, Galen Gray airs 447 Millvale Road. The last is map zero four three zero zero two, Johnson Audrey Ayazov and Frank Johnson, 980 River Road.
Just like, all of these properties have, I sent a certified letter discussing the status notifying them that they needed to contact me. I sent a certified letter and I also sent a letter, just regular, none of which were returned. All of the people on this, all of the representatives of these accepted service of the certified letter, so I know that they're. One of these properties, map forty-one lot 24, has a person living there who's not the owner and I asked the police department to drop off a letter at the property so that the person there would at least know. There's no legal requirement that we do that, but we at least know that this is in, this may occur. And the information that you have, it shows when the last payments on these accounts were made and what's outstanding in terms of that. So we have one out that is due to come back to you on the 25th of this month and I'm requesting that these be allowed to go up for sale with, to be, the bids to be returned by October 11th for action that your council may be involved during that week.
How the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions? So all of these folks will have the opportunity obviously to make well until October 11th.
That's right.
Yep. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes?
And as a note, the 23 Oak Street that appeared before you at the last meeting, we've not heard anything since that time.
Okay. I think we gave, that was a?
That's until the 25th.
Twenty-fifth, right? Yeah, okay. Item eight's agenda items, resolve 2023-13 to approve the town of Bucksport downtown district exterior improvement grant program. How the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes? Next is resolve 2023-14 to approve the roofing bids for the ice rink building. I believe the low bid is $6,000 to Maguire's Construction. How the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes? Appointments, assignments, elections, resignations. We have Luke Schelli, code enforcement officer, building official, plumbing inspector, street naming and numbering coordinator. Do we need to have a motion to accept him? Is that positioned? Motion to appoint.
Motion to appoint.
Second.
Questions? Richard?
I asked about that one prior to.
That one was already done in March, wasn't it?
That's right.
Richard? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes? Do we need to get another name tag? It's going to be really long. Item 10 is approval of quit claims and discharges and deeds. First one, and again, I'll take these all in as one group if there's no objections. First is Joseph and Carol Ranzoni, map six, lot 56, tax lien certificates. Six sixteen, 2015, six twenty-two, 2016. Six twenty-one, 2017, six twenty, 2018, six nineteen, 2019, six thirty, 2020. B is Troy and Joy Carey, map zero zero six, lot zero two seven dash zero four, tax lien certificate, zero six, thirty, 2020. C is Holly Burke, map thirteen, lot eighty, tax lien certificate, June 30th, 2020. D is David and Christina Witham, map thirty-seven, lot zero eight, tax lien certificates, June 16th, 2015, June 22nd, 2016, June 21st, 2017, June 20th, 2018, June 19th, 2019, June 30th, 2020. E is Lori Ann Govan, Douglas S. McDonough, Kathleen McDonough, Michael G. McDonough, tax lien certificate, June 30th, 2020. How the council like to proceed?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Questions?
I would note that these were the ones that did not appear on the list after responding to the letters that were there.
All those in favor? Opposed? Passes? Town manager report?
Our Public Works Director, Jay Lempfer, has a meeting on Friday, September 9th, with MDOT to review what is needed for repairs to Central Street in order for the town to take it over as a local road. The project at our Jacob Buck Pond culvert project is nearly complete with the guardrails remaining to be done along with a small punch list. There was an inspection of that tomorrow as well. We're grateful to Wardwell Construction for moving this project along and getting the road reopened in four weeks instead of the five weeks that was estimated. A local group is in the process of revitalizing the annual Ghostport event in Bucksport. Thus far, it is scheduled for October 29th and includes a parade and brunch for the witches. Stay tuned for more details, which will be coming soon. I am pleased to report that as of today, one week after the tax due date for the first half of property taxes, that we've collected 49.3% of the commitment. I want to thank all the taxpayers who've done such a great job of meeting their obligations. I had the pleasure of attending the Maine Maritime Academy convocation on Monday, August 29th in Castine. It was a great event and a reminder of how fortunate we are to have their satellite campus for the Mariner Training Institute here in Bucksport. The Historical Society would like to meet with the Infrastructure Committee before your next council meeting on September 25th to discuss their building. I have listed this item on the agenda for that committee meeting. And finally, I have reached out to skate Bucksport to see if the assessment on the ramp that was donated is done along with a cost estimate for necessary repairs. A representative from the group indicated that they were completing that process and would be providing that information soon. In addition, they will be coming to the council at the September 25th meeting in order to get permission to hold a fundraiser at the site near Ian's Playground.
Any questions? I see also Jacob, our ballot is set with, those are closed now nominations, correct?
Close today. We have three candidates running for council.
Thank you. Any questions? Actually, I do have one question on the public works. I noticed that we haven't been doing the blockchain machine. Is that coming up, is it?
Yes, it is.
I notice other roads in other towns have started doing it.
The edging.
Yeah.
Yes, they are doing it.
Okay.
We have to grab, they are.
They are, okay. Okay, thanks. Next is public hearings. We have a public hearing for the elimination of a public easement on the Gullies Road. This action would limit access on that abandoned road to property owners who own land on that road that would otherwise be landlocked. Open the public hearing? Comments?
You have one letter in your packet from the person who had submitted information.
Hearing no comments. Close the public hearing? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'll tell you what, I'll reopen it here, so go ahead. Come on up.
Harold Morrison, Huey Town. I would just like to say that whatever you decide, we will agree to it. We have to, you know, you're the man. But I have animals and that road now passes through my pasture. It's hunting season's coming up. I have animals that could be mistaken for deer. The only other thing I would like to see happen is a clarification as to what I can do to protect that land, such as gate it. I have no problem giving access to the people that require it. I just don't want the public using it because of the fact that you mentioned earlier, COVID, monkeypox, all this stuff. I want to know who is going across my piece of property. So if it could be in there somehow stating what I am allowed to do as far as protecting it, I would appreciate it.
I think if we get rid of the public easement, then it's your land, there is no, we have no control over, it's your control to do what you want. So that's, that's how we're going to decide tonight on this.
Okay.
If we decide not to get rid of the public easement, then I think it's a civil action that we need to take care of.
If somebody was upset, if you put a gate up, it would be a civil action, not a?
But let's take the vote and see which way it goes. And then if it, if we get rid of the public easement, we understand that, then there is no right to the public to have access across that and you can do what you wish.
The people who, on that segment, for whom that is their only access, have a right to go through that. I think there's three or four, there's three.
It's three landowners.
Yes, that those three landowners would have a right to access their property through that way, because that's their only access.
Okay.
That, there wouldn't be any reason anybody would have to allow anybody else to do that. I mean, that is, then is, if somebody's crossways, if that's what, the council decides to limit the, or extinguish the public easement, then the town has no say in it at all.
All right. If you extinguish it, does that mean that the people that want to go to the graveyard or eliminate, and it means that the people that still have property beyond there are able to use it, not just the general public?
There's no general public right of access.
Okay, very good. That clarifies a lot for myself.
Yeah, so the action limits the access on that abandoned road to property owners who own land on that road that otherwise be landlocked.
And have a right of way.
And have a right of way.
Yes, we have no problem with that.
I mean, if they had company, if they, you know.
Oh, no, no.
But it's the, it's the, it's like any private road that has no public access to it, you know?
We have allowed.
The people that live on that road decide who comes.
Okay. Well, we have no problem. We have friends and relatives of the people that have the access to use it, no problem. We understand. We just, we have people wandering through now that just, you know, they have other ways to get there. And it's, like I said, we have stuff to protect up there and we just don't want it open. If you could take that into consideration, I'd really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Not asking for any special favors, we'll go by the rules. Thank you very much.
In regard to gating it, Mr. Sauvay, who owns the next piece down from me, he kind of expressed a concern over if there was a fire or if somebody was injured down there and that, if there's a gate that's locked and I'm not available to open the gate for the emergency people, you know, that's, you know, they'd have to go all the way around Jacob Buck Pond to come in through the, tend to the situation.
Mm-hmm. But there is access, there is an access point to get in there though, from the other end, right?
Yes.
If it was that case.
Mm-hmm.
Is that anything like my club gauge?
Knox box, the fire department has a key to the box.
Anyone wants to have a key to it? They can, they can get in and unlock it.
That sounds good.
Yep. And I believe they supply those too.
This one on the outside of this building?
They do for us, maybe, yeah.
So if I cannot lock that, our property actually goes down the Gully Road, then the Grist Mill Road goes across and our other piece of property is off the Grist Mill Road. Can that other end of the Jacob Buck Pond Road, which would be our other access, can that be gated and locked?
I don't know the answer to that. That's.
That would fall into the same category as us locking our end.
That's a public.
Yeah, there's a public easement, I thought.
That's a public.
The one with a public easement you can't lock, but, but both ends of the, of the public, where we, where you extinguish the right, you could gate both ends of it, you know, or whoever's on the other end of, from where you are, they could put a gate there that prevented access coming up through.
Beyond, once again.
Beyond.
Jacob Buck Pond end, maybe you could have a gate wherever that access ends coming down past your house, so.
Because they believe that what we're talking about is it sort of goes down to that corner that is where we're extinguishing the public easement to. Because the other road comes to that, that allows access.
Yes, I think that originally in 81 or wherever you were, I believe that's what they shut off was from our land, from Bucksmills Road to the Grist Mill.
To the Grist Mill Road, yeah.
Well, that's what, it appeared from the map and stuff that they had done.
Yep.
And one other thing, the Grist Mill Road, I think has been misnamed. I've been there since I was born. The Grist Mill Road comes from where the Church Road starts off Central Street, goes through the hall, all the low ground to the Grist Mill, which is at the head of Thurston's home. There would be no reason, I don't believe, for anybody to go up that hill with a load of wheat and then back, back down and go to the mill. I don't know why they changed the name to the Grist Mill Road on that piece.
We have a, we have a new person, road namer here. We can, we can inquire from him.
I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, I don't, that one's beyond me here, I don't know, so, thanks. Anything else? All right, we'll close the public hearing. How the council like to proceed? Just looking for a motion to accept the elimination of the public easement on the abandoned Gullies Road. Motion approved. Second. Motion second. All those in favor? Opposed? Exchanged? Next is discussion items, not on the agenda for the council and the public. Anybody?
That resolve being passed, does that immediately take effect as of, like, right now?
Yeah, that one's, that one's effect right now, yep. Right?
Yes, it's not an ordinance that has a 30-day, or a permit that has a 30-day appeal period.
I just want to apologize for not getting my town report in for this meeting. You will have it for the next meeting, but just a quick synopsis, the electric vehicle charges were installed on August 2nd. We've had five sessions during the month for a duration of 248 minutes with 26.808 kilowatt hours used for a cost to those users of $7.24. I've had additional interest in 27 Main Street. I reached out to Wish Rock to see where we stood. We're providing the Economic Development Committee with that update in regards to Wish Rock, so that you know. The person that we've been dealing with is actually leaving the company next week and he's put me in contact with the new person. They have not heard back from Misha in regards to the request. Funding was exhausted and there was hopes that there would be additional funding since the program was very popular and the money went really quick. Second developer contacted me in regards to 27 Main Street. They'd like to sign an, they would like an NDA with the town, but I'm meeting with Caitlin and Luke so we could look at this proposal and see if it's a route we'd like to bring to the council. A third developer is going to be coming to the site tomorrow, so I'll be coming in tomorrow to meet with that developer. And I received an email in regards to 27 Main Street from the editor of the newspaper in town who has a project that he would like the town to look at and his proposal will be on the next Community and Economic Development Committee meeting, which is Monday, September the 12th.
Thanks, Rich. Questions? What's the, what's the reason for removing the construction or marketing? Somebody saw something, sorry to cut you off.
No. The, the second person who I had mentioned with the NDA has actually been inquiring for some time and I've been on them to get me something. And so I finally got something, but they also want an NDA, which it's a nondisclosure agreement. So I'd like to review with the staff to make sure this is something that we believe is serious and.
Yeah, go cautious, please.
Yes, yes, we're not going to rush. And then the third one was brought in from someone who had previously shown interest that came to the council. This is a developer who's developed properties down in the area of Stonington area and will be coming up to town, like I said, tomorrow.
Anybody, you, Sue, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question. Is this, is this being handled as if it's part of that deal with the gentleman that we bought all the properties from? Is it being handled in regard, is that part of the?
You mean the estate that, that invaded to the town?
Feldman, was his name?
Yeah, it was Feldman, but there's, you have no interaction with that Feldman?
No, Mr. Feldman passed away and I have no interaction with his father.
I understand, but this, this was all at a time when the council was allowed to spend no more than $250,000 and my understanding is that the whole project took more than that for them to complete it when, when they were purchased. There were costs that the town had to absorb and tearing stuff down and so on and so forth. And I just wondered if this agreement that you're working on will reflect in any way into that situation.
Meaning going over the 300,000 or the new limit? Is that what you're asking?
Whatever, yeah.
Yeah. I guess I would defer to the, to the council and the town manager on guidance there. So that property was purchased, I was working at Camden National Bank at the time.
Right.
And yes, you're right, it was a 249, whatever, it was under the 250,000, so it didn't have to go to the voters. The project was completed, buildings were torn down. Now there was sale of property as well. I don't know if that deducts from that amount. We've also been maintaining it for seven years, so we've obviously had labor and other, so I mean, by, at this point right now, I'd imagine that if we're at or exceeded that amount.
Yeah, and there were taxes forgiven on the properties, I believe, at the time. And I'm not sure if that's.
I don't know.
There might have been abated sewer fees or something. Yeah, there were some abatements and stuff that we just get away with because we weren't, we weren't going to get them. Yep.
Yep.
Anything else? Quick question on our hotel that's for sale. Is, where do we, where do we stand with that legally? I know that maybe a sale, not a sale. If not, what are our options instead of that just sitting there?
The court still has not issued word one on the matter that was filed or any of the motions that have been filed on that since it was filed in April of 2021. And I don't know if you saw the article that said how many years behind Washington County was and Hancock is not that much further behind that. There was a sale date that we had been, had been indicated of August 25th. Clearly that didn't happen. We've had no further information from the potential buyers on when or if they would. on when or if they would complete that. Our court officer and I have discussed this. I'm extremely concerned about this building going through another winter, unoccupied and in the condition that it has continued to deteriorate.
When was the last time you were in the loop? Has it been a while?
When the water leak occurred...
Two or three months anyway, since the last time I went over to check because it was doors open. I went over and secured it. I didn't really go through it. Just make sure everything was closed up and locked.
Okay. All right. Anything else on the agenda?
How about the Oak Hill Cemetery? Have you found anybody yet, or the town still...
No. The town has still been maintaining it. What we'll have to do is try and seek somebody before next year in order to get that. It's extremely hard to find people to want to...
Oh, yeah.
To do that. It's my understanding that some of the other cemetery associations are having difficulty finding maintenance people as well.
All right. Next is committee meetings. Sorry, you packet that the historical society wants to meet for infrastructure committee. I assume that's nine twenty-five, not nine twenty-two?
Yes.
So infrastructure on nine twenty-five before our next council meeting at six P.M. All right.
Economic development on September twelfth.
Economic development on September twelfth in this, in this space? Six o'clock?
Six o'clock, yes.
Thank you. All righty. Going to my, what I talked about last week. Take a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you.